Okay, oh wait just a minute.
Sherman Dix.
Is now in the conference. Hi Sherman.
Hey everybody.
Hi. Okay, well it's six o'clock, is everybody ready to get started?
I'm ready.
Yeah, ready.
Abby, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. So thanks everybody for being here, this is the Kingsburg City Council regular meeting. We're having this meeting via teleconference pursuant to executive order N dash two nine dash two zero issued by Governor Gavin Newsom. The council chamber will be closed to the public, uh, public will have the option to call in at five five nine two zero seven three zero zero three. And the passcode is five eight two one. Supervise comments on the agenda items. Um, this is our Wednesday, April first, twenty twenty at six P M. First up we have our invocation which will be given by Pastor Dean Yambla, which is, would be from Potter House Church. So Pastor Dean, will you lead us in the invocation please?
Yes. Will you bow with me, Heavenly Father, we want to thank you that we can still come before you even in trials and tru- and struggles as this time of uncertainty. We could come before you, Lord, and you hear our prayers, you say, you hear the cries of your children. And you hear our cries during this time, and you hear our, our, our voices, the crying out that we need, we're in need and we're in trouble and we need a healer. In this time, Lord, this disease, this struggling, this virus that is attacking many bodies and many people are dying. We ask that, Lord God, you would just comfort us during this time, you touch us, give us peace that passes all understanding. And Lord God, there's, you have leaders that rise up in times like this. And Lord, there are leaders that we need to rise up and even in, in the world, in our country, in our state, even in this, in this city, you, you've placed leaders to rise up in times like this, to lead. When others will run, they will lead. And Lord, I pray that this council, Lord God, as they stand and they lead our, our town, our city, in a direction, Lord God. Whenever other people are worried and stressful, they will give hope, they will speak hope to them, they will show hope. They will hope that they see, and give them hope that there is a future and the future looks brighter than our past. And Lord God, I pray for our responders, our first responders that are going out each and every day. I pray you should keep your hand upon them, keep them safe, Lord. That they will not re- and get this disease, this attract this, this ugly thing that's, that's attacking each and every one of us. But Lord God, you put a bubble and you bleed a blood over them. We ask, Lord God, tonight, as we make decisions, Lord, may they be led by you, Lord. Not by our, our desires, but by our, our hearts that are led by you. We thank you, Father God, for you hear our cries and are pleased tonight. We thank you, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you Pastor Yambla. So I will call this meeting to order officially, our six P M regular, regular session meeting. And Madam Clerk, will you do the roll call please?
Yes. Councilmember Hurtado?
I am here.
Councilmember Polamar?
Here.
Councilmember Dix?
Here.
Councilmember North?
Here.
Mayor Michelle Roman?
And I am here. And I will ask that everybody, if you're not speaking, to make sure you keep your phones on mute during this time thing. Um, next up, I'll have this item number two, public comments, this is the time for any citizen to come forward and address the city council on any issue within its jurisdiction that is not listed on the agenda. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Does anyone like to address the council at this time?
Hi Will, this is Heather Dunn.
Hi Heather.
Hi. I just wanted to say, you know what the last meeting brought up, and I would like to bring it up again and ask that the council, council board, um, was making this an actionable, um, item. Once again to reconsider, um, allowing residents to have backyard chickens. And there's, you know, I, I've kind of put out, um, feelers in several local Facebook groups and there seems to be an overwhelming amount of support. And I would hope that those same folks would step forward and support a, a new action and revisiting the idea of having backyard chickens. And I think, once again, current events have brought to light that, and it would be nice for families to have a way to be able to provide for their own. Um, you know, our family, we have several high-risk family members and, um, right now we're relying on other people that are bringing us groceries and things like that. And it would be, we're, we're planting a garden, we're kind of doing all of those things that we can. The one thing that, that we aren't able to do right now is, you know, maybe use backyard chickens, have some eggs, some protein. And, and I would ask that the council would take a look at that. And, and, you know, I, again, not sure how all of the proceedings work, but move it forward so that it can be an item that you guys can take action on. Um, you know, again, the, we've heard from the stores, being a smaller community, that we're kind of on the, you know, they are taking priority for delivery towards some of the larger communities. And, and our stores kind of sometimes get the last end of that. Um, I would just, again, want to ask that that gets moved to an active, uh, to an agenda that you can take action on.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comments?
Hi, yes, my name is Frances Peters and I'm here in support of that.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
I am Agale Arebalo and I am a gift staff.
Okay, thank you, any other comments? Okay, hearing done, I will close the public comments at this time. Next up, um, is item number three to approve the agenda. And, uh, Mike Nolan, would you like to address this before we approve the agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor and members of the council, um, as a result of the COVID nineteen pandemic and certain employment issues that needed to be addressed immediately, um, and prior to, um, the council meeting tonight, Alex Henderson, as the Director of Emergency Services, issued two executive orders. Um, on Monday with regards to, um, personnel issues. And, um, as the Director of Emergency Services under section two point four zero point oh six oh of the, uh, Kingsburg Municipal Code, he has the authority to issue such rules and regulations and executive orders. Um, and, and those orders don't need to be confirmed after issuance by the city council at the earliest possible date. Um, and these orders were, the determination to issue the orders and the orders were issued after the posting of the agenda. And so, uh, we would, in order to obtain confirmation of those orders by the city council at the earliest possible date, uh, we're requesting under Government Code, section fifty four nine fifty four point two, that the council consider placing, amending the, uh, agenda to place the confirmation of, uh, of the executive order twenty twenty oh one and twenty twenty oh two on this evening's agenda. Uh, in order to do that, that takes, uh, two motions by the council. The first motion, um, or action by the council is to determine that there is a need for immediate action. And that need, and the need to take, the needs to take place, that actions to take place, um, at this meeting, even though it's action that was taken after the agenda was posted, and that the council determines that there is a need for immediate action, then, the council then votes to place the items on the agenda. Um, we would suggest that the exec- if the council determines that, that immediate action is necessary by the council to confirm these executive orders, which we believe it is, that, um, the executive order twenty twenty oh one be placed, be added to Agenda Item five point two for confirmation. And that executive order twenty twenty dash oh two be placed on the agenda as item number five point five on the regular calendar. And, um, so that would be our request, uh, for action by the council to amend the agenda to add, um, confirmation of executive order twenty twenty oh one and twenty twenty oh two to the agenda. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
So Mike, just for clarification, um, for the twenty twenty dash zero one under five point two, would it just be five point two one? I mean, five point two two, since we already have five point two, would it just be like that? Or how would you like that one to be?
I think that we would just add it as a part of the Agenda Item five point two.
Gotcha, okay.
And the action, and the, yeah, and the action that would be necessary, uh, along with that requested in the staff report would be the confirmation of executive order twenty twenty point, twenty twenty dash oh one.
Would it just be part of five point two?
Just be another, yeah, five point two, and so there would be two motions, one to approve, to act on th- those items that are requested in the staff report, and then to act, to con- confirm executive order twenty twenty dash oh one.
Okay, and then just add twenty twenty dash zero two to, we'll just add that to five point five, okay?
Right.
Okay, so first thing we would need to do then, uh, council, is to vote to modify the agenda. And then tonight, um, as we're making, um, anyone, as we make the motion, say your name and the motion, and then as we vote, um, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote tonight, so as we do that, um, our clerks will ask for a roll call vote as we go on, on each of our items tonight. Uh, so first, the first thing I'm going to ask for, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Excuse me, the first, the first vote, uh, to be made, the first action to be taken by the council on this item, on this matter of adding to the agenda is a determination by the council that there is an immediate, there is a need to take immediate action. And that need to take immediate action came to the attention of the council and the city after the agenda was posted. That'd be the first motion.
Okay. So, um, I need a vote on that item, um, for the immediate action, if that is something that you would like to hear tonight. Um, so would anyone like to make that motion?
This is Councilmember North, and I'll make that motion that we need to take immediate action. Um, and that occurred after the agenda, uh, was on the air.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dix, I second that motion.
Okay, great, we have a motion to second, and, um, Madam Clerk, would you like to do the roll call vote?
Yes, Councilmember Hurtado?
Aye.
Councilmember Polamar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dix?
Aye.
Councilmember North?
Aye.
Mayor Roman?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, and, and then this, this next, the, the next motion would be to place the, these two orders on the agenda with executive order two, twenty twenty point oh one being part of Agenda Item five point two, and the executive order twenty twenty dash oh two be a new agenda item identified as item five point five.
Does anybody like to make that motion?
This is Councilmember North, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Someone like to second that?
This is Councilmember Hurtado, I second that motion.
Thank you, and we need a roll call vote?
Councilmember Hurtado?
Aye.
Councilmember Polamar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dix?
Aye.
Councilmember North?
Aye.
Mayor Roman?
Aye.
Okay, now, uh, again, this is Mike Nolan, now the council would approve the agenda as amended.
Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended, amended at this time?
This is Councilmember North, I motion to approve the agenda, the agenda as amended.
Thank you.
This is Councilmember Hurtado, I second.
Thank you. Any sort of roll call vote?
Councilmember Hurtado?
Aye.
Councilmember Polamar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dix?
Aye.
Councilmember North?
Aye.
Mayor Roman?
Aye, thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number four, is that, I'm sorry, anything else, Mike, on that, are we good?
No, that's fine, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to item number four, consent calendar, these items are considered routine and nature, will be placed on the consent calendar. They'll be considered as one item and voted upon in one o- vote unless individual consider- consideration is requested. Uh, tonight, we have four point one through four point four, would anybody like to, um, um, remove one of these items? Or, uh, make a vote, uh, to approve the consent calendar at this time? Would you like to make a motion?
I'll motion to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you, have a second?
Dick?
Thank you. Okay, and, uh, we need a roll call vote?
Councilmember Hurtado?
Aye.
Councilmember Polamar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dix?
Aye.
Councilmember North?
Aye.
Mayor Roman?
Aye, thank you.
All right, moving on to regular calendar, five point one, the coronavirus disease twenty nineteen, COVID nineteen, staff report by our city manager, Alexander Henderson.
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, uh, members of council, uh, we obviously have a couple of, um, agenda items tonight, uh, dealing with COVID nineteen. The first one, um, is just a general update, um, to provide some information with regards to some things that we're doing, uh, organization, uh, internally, and then also, um, information for the community with the, and then talking a little bit too about, uh, some of the things we discussed at our last meeting, which were, um, some of the work that staff has been doing with regards to revenue projections as well. So, um, I've, I've got a handful of updates that I'll, I'll kind of run through. You know, please feel free to interrupt or ask questions, and certainly there'll be time at the end, and then we'll, um, talk about the other two agenda items, um, related to the executive order. One of the things, um, that we had implemented that we'll talk about a little bit later is, uh, the institution of, uh, employee health screenings, uh, which was, uh, a required order over the weekend by Fresno County Department of Public Health. Those screenings consist of a questionnaire right now, and then there is a potential for, um, taking, uh, temperature. Uh, our first responders, um, are already doing, uh, the temperature checks, obviously, um, just because of their, uh, higher chance of potential exposure. We've also executed a number of, uh, internal agreements with, uh, individuals that are able to telework. Uh, so we've, um, taken as many steps as we possibly can to limit exposure here at City Hall. Uh, this just kind of follows up with what we've been, you know, what we've been doing for the last couple of weeks, you know, starting with closure to the public and, um, following, uh, those recommendations, uh, as handed down by the state. Um, we'll continue our emergency planning, um, and that provides, uh, you know, operational continuity, uh, plans that if there is, um, different situations that would occur, from an organization level, um, including, you know, several employees potentially, um, contracting the virus. Establishing, you know, obviously essential versus non-essential employees and making sure that we're continuing to provide, um, the necessary services, um, to the public at large. Uh, this also includes, uh, training for staff, um, you know, for FEMA reimbursements, because a lot of that information has been, has been coming, has been coming out lately as well. Uh, from a community standpoint, uh, we continue to provide meals, uh, to all seniors, um, who we make contact with, and that's, uh, the partnership with, uh, with K C A Ps as well. Uh, a portion of that is being done through, uh, E O C, which was, um, has taken over, uh, the contract that we originally had with, uh, Fresno, Madera Agency on Aging. And they're doing deliveries to, to folks in that program, but if, even if there were seniors that were not in that program, uh, we're continuing to provide meals for them. And a lot of that's being, um, funded through donations or through, uh, that partnership with C A Ps. And, uh, Governor Newsom this week also, um, announced his campaign to assist seniors, and that, uh, information includes a, um, a hotline that people can call to, um, if there are, uh, concerns about the elderly population, but then also, um, actually seniors themselves can, can contact or utilize the hotline as well to, um, get services and have questions answered. Now, we've been working with individual business owners and property owners, uh, to help navigate, um, a lot of the options that are coming down both federally and at the state level. Helping, uh, whether it be employees or employers, um, obviously, uh, difficult time, uh, for, uh, a lot of people, uh, especially those in restaurants or in those businesses that have been ordered to shut, uh, because of the shelter in place. Um, we're working pretty closely with, uh, Fresno Economic Development Corporation on that, they've, they've created a, a resource page and, and have them, uh, good to work with in terms of, um, putting, um, either business owners or property owners in contact, um, with them, and they're helping them, um, determine what options are available. Uh, we obviously continue to update our, uh, city COVID nineteen page, um, and that includes new information regarding, um, stimulus checks that people might be receiving, so that, um, through the I R S. Um, then also small business association, and some of those other, um, employer, employee, um, resources. Uh, we've gotten, uh, a hand, we continue to get a handful of, of calls, um, related to code enforcement, and so I just wanted to kind of bring it up here that we are, um, we're continuing with code enforcement, but obviously, or, um, you know, um, given the situation and, and different situations that people might be in, we're, you know, we're always in a position where we're trying to work with people, uh, for compliance, but, um, you know, we're, I guess, uh, really trying to make sure that we're making contact with individual property owners if there are, um, notices of issues related to code enforcement. Um, some of that challenge right now too is that a lot of people are obviously home, so, um, they're doing a lot of, um, cleanup work, and they were planning to utilize the, uh, spring cleanup that's provided by New Valley, and that's been postponed for the time being, so, um, we're trying to get that, um, back on schedule as well. From a revenue standpoint, um, we've gotten some, uh, projection tools that are provided by a third-party consultant as it relates to, to sales tax. I've included some of that information in your packet this evening. Right now, for the current year, um, obviously it depends somewhat upon how much longer this lasts, but it's looking like it, you know, has the potential to last at least through, uh, the remainder of this fiscal year. We're estimating, uh, in between a nine and a twelve percent, um, decrease over, uh, what we were originally, uh, projecting, uh, as it relates to sales tax. Um, so that is our impactful, impactful sales tax, and then also our measure E funds as well, so those projections are included. Um, we actually have a spreadsheet that they've, that, um, our consultant has provided that allows you to, uh, enter the number of months that the, um, that the pandemic potentially, uh, could impact, um, individual services and, um, so we're, we're going to use those as we go, some of the challenges is obviously, it feels like a lot longer, but, uh, we've really been dealing with this for, uh, you know, a little over two weeks. So it's hard to, um, make sound projections just based on, because we don't have, uh, a lot of that actual data in yet, so for example, um, you know, as we talked about previously, we, we receive sales tax dollars, um, in arrears, you know, just this week, we received our, um, our allocation for, uh, transactions that occurred in, in January. So, um, you know, really we'll see the true impact of March, you know, sometime either in, in May or June. And then obviously, um, there are what they call cleanup payments that occur in July and August that, um, give us, uh, our, our true ups as it relates to our, um, what they would call, uh, fourth quarter, which is, uh, April through, um, April through June. Uh, we're anticipating that property tax payments, um, at least, uh, through our second tier, we received our first tier earlier in the year, but the second tiers will probably be, um, close to budgeted numbers, just based upon the timing of when those payments are made. Usually, uh, folks, you know, paying, you know, via escrow, it's, we're in contact with the, um, the assessor's office, uh, if they're seeing people asking for, um, forbance, uh, as it relates, uh, to COVID, um, but we haven't, uh, heard anything back on that. Our transient occupancy dollars, uh, we'll have a better idea, um, we just finished, um, what we call the, the third quarter, so January through, through March. Um, so we'll be getting actual numbers, um, from our hotels, and we're going to ask them, um, to try and split out, um, information related to, um, the latter part of March, but that will give us a better idea about, um, you know, the next three months, uh, and then the potential impact for twenty twenty one and that budget. And then, you know, really, uh, the next few months, we'll see how that, you know, um, permits, building, those sorts of things, whether those, um, continue or, um, whether we have to, uh, readjust, uh, our thoughts as we, as we move into the next budget. So, um, we'll continue to keep you updated on that, um, a- as we go along and as we learn more. But that is, um, the report that I have, uh, for this evening. Oh, excuse me, one, one thing, I, that is in the staff report is, um, obviously, a little over, um, two years ago, I think now, uh, the council adopted, uh, a financial policy, which, you know, we sort of, um, sort of short-term call it a waterfall fund, if we had any surplus funding. Um, a portion of that would go for CalPERS, uh, unfunded crude liability, uh, a portion of that goes towards what we call our economic stabilization fund, and a portion of it goes towards, uh, an equipment reserve fund. So the economic stabilization fund, uh, was created for situations like this, where we have, uh, the potential, um, for unforeseen shortfalls, uh, in revenues, so that we can continue to provide, um, needed services. That fund right now has a balance of, uh, six hundred and thirty thousand, a little over six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So that might be something that we look at, uh, depending upon how long, uh, you know, this situation has been used to last and the overall impact that it, uh, potentially has to, um, some of the revenues that we usually rely on. I would say, you know, obviously, any of these things are, are going to be, um, you know, have, have the potential to have, uh, negative impacts, but we do have, our revenues are, uh, generally diverse, um, from a property tax to a, um, sales tax. Um, you know, and then, you know, our building and planning fees are usually, you know, are paying for, um, the services that, that they provide. And so, um, well certainly, um, any reduction, um, we want to take ser- you know, we would take seriously, um, you know, we're not as dependent necessarily on, um, one type of revenue over another, so, um, something to consider as well as we go forward. So, uh, that concludes, uh, my report this evening, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from council at this time? I just want to thank you Alex and staff on everything, there's a lot going on, I know it's changing every single day. Everything keeps, you know, seems like we, here one thing and within an hour it changes again, so thank you so much, I appreciate it. Anything else from anybody? Okay. Okay, moving on then to item five point two, COVID nineteen lead policy update, staff report by Christina Windover, Director of Administrative Services, and presentation by the Director of Emergency Services, Alexander Henderson.
Yes, members of council. This particular item ties in directly with Executive Order Number 2020-01. Originally, we had planned to bring it to you for approval, but as we realized, as things sort of changed over the weekend, and we started to see more requests, both from an employee level with a necessity to try and implement some of the teleworking quickly, and then obviously, the federal legislation kicking in today, that it would make sense to enact Executive Order 2020-01 as part of, earlier this week as opposed to waiting until today. But obviously, you guys are in a position to confirm that as well. So I'll just touch on some of the highlights of what that order does. Most of these are a part of the Families First Coronavirus Act that was passed by Congress. So some highlights include expanded provisions of the Family Medical Leave Act. This allows eligible employees to utilize up to 12 weeks of job protected leave for qualifying COVID-19 reasons for absence. The Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act provides employees with up to 80 hours of paid leave for qualifying COVID-19 reasons for absence. This leave is in addition to any other leave accrued under existing MOU's policies and employment contracts. This leave expires on December 31, 2020, and the sick leave is subject to daily aggregate caps, depending upon that reason for absence. Originally, one change that this had is that we were under the impression that we would be reimbursed that emergency paid sick leave through payroll taxes. But we've gotten clarification from the Department of Labor just this week that public entities are, will not qualify for that. So if you were a private business and were required to offer this, there would be a credit for that. That will not be the case for public agencies. We did clarify a maximum negative leave bank of 80 hours for those employees who require additional time beyond 80 hours provided by the Families First Act, as well as any accrued time that they have. So if you recall, your original policy that we passed two weeks ago included the ability for employees to, you know, go, what we would call go negative in their accruals. This creates a cap. It includes emergency telecommuting policy agreement for employees deemed eligible by the Director of Emergency Services. So it has specific guidelines, what's required for telework, and there's an actual agreement that employees then sign. And then there are a number of other internal forms just related to COVID-19 that we can utilize. So our action tonight, and Mike, I mean, maybe, maybe you can provide some insight here. They're really the same action, because the executive order is not different from the proposed policies that we were going to ask you to approve tonight. They were just enacted earlier in the week, so we're asking you to confirm that. Your packet has about, it's about 32 pages of, is the policy. That's not all new policy. It basically incorporates existing FMLA leave policy that has already been adopted. Put it all together essentially so that you would have all of that in one location. And then obviously, some of the, some of the pages, 32 pages, are those agreement forms and internal documents. So I don't know, Mike, if you want separate action or if confirming the executive order will, in essence, approve the proposed policy.
Yes, this is Mike Nolan. Since the executive order includes all of the policy that's attached to Alex's staff report, I believe that what will be necessary is just the council confirming Executive Order 2020-01. And that will, that will also approve all of the, the sick leave and family medical care leave that's part of the executive order.
So would the motion just be confirming it then, Mike?
Yes, the motion would be to confirm the-
Executive Order?
Director of Emergency Services Executive Order 2020-01.
20-01, okay. Are there any questions from staff on 5.2, first of all, about the leave policy update?
Me, council?
I'm sorry. I was looking at staff reports. I'm sorry, from council.
Yeah, this is Councilmember Dix. Just to clarify, it's 80 hours in addition to existing sick leave that we offer, and government agencies are not entitled to reimburse them.
Yeah, so the federal legislation identifies 80 hours of COVID-related sick leave for qualifying absences, which is spelled out in the policy. So there's different levels of that. So, and so that's over and above any accruals that you might have. And then our understanding, there was some vague language in the, in the act that talked about reimbursement, but we've received opinion that public agencies will not be eligible for reimbursement.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from council? Okay, hearing none. Then I need a motion to approve item 5.2 with the addition of the, to reaffirm the Executive Order 2020-01 as well.
Real quick before you, this includes the telecommuting policy, right?
Yes, sir.
No?
Have we gotten any confirmation, I mean, I guess, the policy is allowing employees to work from home, and in exchange, they'll provide their own internet? There's not going to be an expectation that we reimburse them for that, or?
Yes, that's correct. That specific language is in the policy this evening that there, we would not reimburse them for internet or phone data or other things that might come from telework. So that's part of the, it's part of the policy itself, and then there are individual agreements that we have acquired from those who are eligible to telework.
And with our expectation, how many employees have we identified that potentially could take advantage?
In City Hall, I think, well, City Hall and Public Works, which is department head level 10 right now, but it differs depending upon the week. So there are certain items, certainly, that can be done from home and other items that need to be done here in the office. So some of those are more flexible or open-ended as it relates day-to-day. Right now, you know, we don't really have anyone, there's no, I think there's only, there's one administrative staff in the police department right now that's working from home, but that's all from either police or fire. So it's really the majority, a good portion of City Hall and department heads, and then some smaller administrative staff in the police department.
Are we kind of actively looking at some technologies and things like that that would help us be more remote or open up other potentials? Or possible changes to maybe our financial policies as far as length of time for deposits? Or, you know, I'm thinking batch work so that somebody, even if they're not telecommuting, they're only having to come in, you know, once or twice a week? Or even, you know, since we don't have an open door to the public, maybe modify schedules for shift work so somebody's in the office two days, others in the office two days, et cetera.
Yes, we've done some of that. So for example, in our planning department, she's working from home a couple of days and then is in the office some of the other days. So we're alternating that as much as we can based upon the type of work that's being done. So for example, obviously, we do payroll every other week, and then on the opposite week, we do accounts payables. So we have looked at trying to limit or alternate schedules, sort of as you're alluding to, to try and just limit the number of employees that are in City Hall at any one time. So, you know, we're going to continue to look at that. I mean, from a technology standpoint, we have access via team viewer to the standalone computer that's here at City Hall, which has access to our server. And so, you know, we're able to do as much, I think, as we can away from the office, and then some of it is just, some of it just is required to be done here.
And on the telecommuting policy, have we figured out, I mean, have we touched base with our insurance company about workman's comp issues potentially, or accommodations, things like that?
So that's, workers' comp is identified in the policy as well, that they're not, if you're injured at home, or something like that, you're not covered. That's in there.
Okay, thank you.
Wrong.
Are there any other questions from council members? Okay, I will open it up to public comment. If there's anyone from the public that would like to comment on item 5.2. Okay, hearing none. I will close the public comment, and I will need a motion on item 5.2 to approve the COVID-19 Leave Policy Update and also reaffirm Executive Order 2020-01. This is Councilmember Hurtado, aye. Or not.
Councilmember Hurtado makes that motion, and I'll second.
Okay, and the motion and a second, and we'll call both.
Councilmember Hurtado?
Aye.
Councilmember Palomar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dix?
Aye.
Councilmember North?
Aye.
Mayor Roman?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to item 5.3, City Engineer Project Project Report. Report by our city engineer, Dave Peters, and a presentation by our city engineer, Dave Peters.
Mayor, members of council, Dave Peters here. Thank you, good evening.
Good evening.
Copy my report is in your packet, so I'll kind of hit the high points, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. On our capital improvement project, completed the Crandall Swim Complex improvements. The contractor doesn't need to come back next week. He's going to be on site fixing the seventh, doing some minor punchless type things, and then the project will be complete. So you'll see that on your agenda soon for acceptance. We're starting the, next week, we're also starting the pedestrian improvement on Tenth Avenue, which will connect the development along Tenth Avenue between Cam and Stroud with a pathway for pedestrians and particularly students to get to them from school. Our water treatment plants to treat the trichloro propane at wells 12 and 13 are ongoing. The project also installs chlorination facilities on all of our wells. So we're hoping to have the chlorination part of the project complete by early summer, and then the entire project, including the two treatment plants, will be done in the fall. Some of the development projects we have going on is the Hash residential development. I think we're calling it Summerlin. Phase one is mostly complete, phase two is beginning construction, and we're working with the developer to plan check and approve a third phase of that project, which will be the final phase. The Housing Authority project at Sierra and Marion is ongoing. They have a pretty significant concrete pour today, so that work is continuing to progress. And some of the off-site infrastructure will be put out big soon with the majority of that work being over the summer. So that'll be work on widening Sierra Street, constructing a new road adjacent to the Tri-County Health Complex, and then also realigning Madison. We just received 90% plan on the Golden State Boulevard reconstruction project, so we're, that's in plan check. They had initially had projects scheduled to go to construction this summer. I think that's flipping at least into the fall. I'm trying to get clarification on that, and I'll pass that information on when I get it. We're pushing forward with our downtown Kingsburg strategic plan, so that's our project that's funded through the Council of Government's Transit Oriented Development Grant Program. So it's a strategic plan for downtown, going to focus on parking pedestrian movement and transit-oriented development strategies in the downtown area. So we're putting things together, doing some preliminary analysis and study, and then when we can kind of get back together and meet, we'll, we will have some public participation in that project. Some of the traffic safety projects that we're looking at, traffic safety committee met recently, and is looking at the possibility of putting rapid flashing beacons on the North Lake crosswalk at 18th and Mariposa by making tools. And we're also working with Caltrans to see the feasibility in solving an all-way pedestrian movement or a pedestrian scramble at 18th and Sierra in front of the high school, and removing the mid-block crosswalk on 18th between Sierra and Talarri Street.
Michelle Roman-
Has left the conference.
And the last thing I wanted to report was, I'm sorry.
You can keep going. She'll come back.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just gonna, yeah, sorry, I had a couple more. Track 6122, which is the development at 18th and Cam.
Is now in the conference.
Is ongoing. I think residents in the area this week received notice about the surrounding of the lines around the subdivision and a potential for a service outage next week lasting up to eight hours during the day. We've been working with the developer, who I think is with us tonight, and we're looking at possibly switching the outage to the nighttime. So we'll be, we'll be providing a little bit more information on that when PGD is able to give us more firm direction on what they're able to do. But I do believe the work that was scheduled for next week has been, has been pushed off a little bit. As soon as we have some definite information, we'll share that. As in the health complex is very close to having the plans approved and construction beginning. We're just working on a couple of small details with the developer and assisting in their efforts to obtain an encouragement permit from Caltrans for the work in the state right of way. And we have a completed set of improvement plans for the new baseball- And we have a completed set of improvement plans for the new baseball field on the, on the new KYDA site adjacent to Separgeon Field, and we're assisting that group with permitting through Tulare County. We also have just received the call for projects for the next cycle of the ATP program. That's the active transportation program, so that funds projects that, that emphasize non-motorized transportation, so walking, biking, that kind of thing. So, we were just making our effort, we have been working with our consultant over the last few months to prepare. We're here enough to actually prepare the application, but I understand now that that will be delayed probably until September to allow cities to complete the public participation portion of the grant application. And then the last thing I wanted to report was the work on State Route 99 through Kingsburg. It's still scheduled to begin this Sunday evening, April 5th. It will close a lane in each direction. They'll be, they'll remove some of the median. So, the northbound traffic in the number one lane, which would be the most inside lane by the median, will actually cross over the median and will, will go north in the, in the number, in the number one southbound lane, if that makes any sense, with the middle lane moving over to the median, and then they'll have lane closures. And that, that will kind of cycle, cycle for northbound and southbound. So, there'll be some significant closures related to that project for, for, like, some time. The freeway ramp that Mountain View Vessel and Sierra will also be closed periodically during the one-year construction duration of the project. And there'll be significant work at Mountain View because they're actually going to lower the entire freeway underneath the over crossing to increase the vertical clearance to accommodate the new guidelines. So, anyway, that, that work is, I talked to Caltrans today, that work's actually still on schedule and will begin this Sunday night. So, with that, I'll complete my report and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from council?
This is Councilmember North, and I just wanted to say thank you to our city manager and to Dave Peters still working on that PG&E issue. I know that was only in my district, and there were a lot of people concerned about that. And when we talked to you, I know that was a lot of work, but we really appreciate all your help on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Dave, just in general, this is Councilmember Dix. In general, are you getting any feedback about potential delays? As a result?
I know that construction is considered essential for now, that products or costs overrun potentially. No, not really. I mean, in our, you know, in our industry, we really have been relatively unaffected just in terms of the pace of projects and deadlines. You know, we really haven't had any project deadlines changed. A lot of the projects that we're working on in the city have federal funding. There's been no guidance that, you know, any of the deadlines for delivering those projects are, have changed or are going to change. So, you know, it's all kind of business as usual as of right now.
Thank you.
Dave, can you, what is a, you were talking about over in front of the high schools, the people mover. Can you describe what that is a little more?
The pedestrian scramble? Yeah, if you've, if you've, yeah, if you've ever been to Bulldog Stadium, right there at Bulldog Lane and Speeder, they have one. You could Google that if you're interested, sort of by the tennis courts. But what, what ends up happening is you push the pedestrian signal and instead of just giving you the ability to go across one crosswalk leg, you essentially stop all people movement, and pedestrians have essentially the center of the intersection, and they can go any, any direction they want. So, you can, you know, you could walk directly from the high school to Tom's Donut on a straight line during that pedestrian phase of the traffic signal. So, when you have large groups of pedestrians and, you know, lots of different movements, it's been proven to be pretty effective, and we think, you know, with the proposal to eliminate the crosswalk on Eighteenth north of Sierra, that, that might be a, a good, a good counter to that.
I see there's a lot in Santa Monica, too. And I'm also happy to hear they're actually going to continue with the construction on 99 because right now there's not a lot of traffic on 99, and since we're at home, this is a great time to get it started. I was worried they were going to delay it, and so I think it's actually a really good thing that we're going to continue to go forward with it. So, at least while we're all home, at least get a month into it. So, it won't affect all of us when we do go back to work. So, I think that's a really good thing that I was concerned with. They may delay it, so that's good to hear. We're going to start it on Sunday. Okay?
Yeah, and that's kind of been our goal with a lot of the projects is they're, you know, they're in lower traffic. There's less impact to, you know, kids going to school and those sorts of things. So, as long, you know, none of the funding is, is, is affected by any of this, we're pushing ahead, trying to get all, as many projects done as we can.
Great. Any other questions from council?
I have a quick question. This is Councilmember Hurtado. Dave, you said that it was anticipated to last a year, the lane closure.
Correct.
So, what was that timeline on that?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, the project, yeah, the project will last, the entire project will last a year. It, the length of the project is from Sierra Street in Kingsburg to Second Street in Selma, so it's a lengthy project. It will affect the interchanges at Mountain View, Vessel, and Sierra. So, those will be, those, those, those interchanges, the ramps at those interchanges will be closed periodically during that one-year construction duration of the project. But they, they said they would only affect closures at one interchange at a time. They wouldn't have, you know, consecutive interchange closures. So, I would have to, to access the next interchange down the line. But, yeah, the whole project should take a year.
Right, thank you. That's, that's good to know, and I know that we have people watching at home and just important to. I know we, as a council, have heard this already, but I just wanted to ensure that we could get some more clarification for those people who are listening. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to public comment. Is there anybody who'd like to have any comment at this time? Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Hello, sorry, this is Sandra.
Hi, good morning.
Hello, hello. Thank you. Yes, just to follow up on Dave's report in regards to track 5122. I do want to thank staff and engineer, engineer, on working with us in regards to the work that does need to be completed by PG&E. Just a little enlightenment in regards to the work that will be handled. We have done all prep work in order to minimize the amount of outage that will happen. And we're aggressively getting it arranged to allow some night, to be done at night work, which would impact less individuals or impacting less. So, I just appreciate them working with us and get that as quickly as possible rescheduled and in a more amiable way for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hey, Sandra, this is Councilmember Dix. I wanted to say I got to, I've been seeing the, the homes come along, along Eighteenth there. They look great, by the way, and. Yeah, they're looking great. How have things been since all this has been going on as far as sales? I mean, it doesn't seem like things are slowing down for you guys.
Based on, actually, our traffic has slowed down. We have taken, indeed, and following all orders in regards to social distancing and as far as anything being open. If someone wants to tour the location, it's by appointment, and we take all measures to do that there. Although we are still getting immense amount of inputs, Kingsburg is a tend-up demand for the product and the north, the north area. We have not had any cancellations, and I know other communities have had cancellations. We find that the buyers that we have are very solid. They are essential workers that we know of, so I think as far as any possibilities of losing anything, we're extremely hopeful that it doesn't. So, our impact is lower. But the traffic has slowed down, but we still are getting inquiries and doing everything we can at this point.
Great.
That's good to hear. Any other public comments? Okay, hearing none. Any other comments from council? Okay, thank you, Dave. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Get back up here. On his report, move back up. Okay, next up is item 5.4, capital improvement plan, 2019-2020 update. Staff report by our city manager, Alexander Henderson. Presentation by our city manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, this is essentially a continuation of some of Dave's report. Every year is part of our annual budget process, we provide an update with regards to the adopted capital improvement plans and projects that are going on and start, kind of start the kickoff for potential projects that may be coming up with the upcoming budget cycle. So, a number of these that are in this report that you have in front of you were just covered by Dave, so I'm going to, I'm just going to do a couple of highlights. But if there are any of them in particular that I don't cover, please feel free to ask questions on them. We are working on the installation of security cameras here at City Hall. And then we're also looking at doing additional cameras at the police department and at some of our public parks. That project, I know Councilmember Palomar has been a part of, is part of the Public Safety Committee. One of the Public Safety Committee members is a Kingsburg resident. He's also a lieutenant with the President Sheriff's Office, so he's assisting our police department with that project as well. And so, I know they're working on that, and as they, as they get bids for that, we'll, I think we'll be coming back to the, to the Public Safety Committee for more discussion. We were able to complete and close the grant that we provided for the market rate apartments on Draper Street. Those are the Apotep lofts, so that was completed. We're continuing to provide our grant program for facade improvements. So, we have a couple of applications under review right now, including the former Bank of America building. I anticipate that they'll be utilizing it as well as the professional building, obviously, used it, and they're building off the cream room, and there's a couple of other projects in town that are looking to utilize that grant program, matching grant program as well. It's not on the list here, but I also do want to talk about the micro grant program. We've done a couple of projects with that, so we helped partner with the high school, obviously, to put up their, that signage that they have, the digital sign. But then also the walking tour, we've been partnering with the historical park and specifically with Mike Dunn. He's been carrying most of the water on that project, so you've seen about 22 of those pedestals in downtown right now, and we're kind of continuing to add to them. But there's a number of those that is part of that micro grant reimbursement or matching program. Dave talked about a couple of the road projects, and there's obviously some of those are coming up as well, including work on Mailert, work on Marion Street. You know, certainly to your guys' point about 99 project and people not being on the street. You know, Dave and I have been talking about trying to put together bids maybe a little bit sooner than we, than we normally would because it would be nice to get the work done potentially. If this is going to continue for the next, you know, longer than a month, it'd be a good time to try and get that work done, and we're not impacting so many businesses once they're ready to open back up. We obviously completed work at Athwell Park, skate park, fitness court, and playground in conjunction with the healthcare district, and then also completed work at Crandall. There's a couple of minor punchless items at the pool, and so we're working with Dave's office just to finalize those as well because obviously that's closed right now, so making sure we get those done in a timely manner. Purchased a number of new squad cars through Measure E, so those have all come in. They're in varying stages of being outfitted and decal. There's a couple of new trucks that were purchased in the streets department, or one in the streets department and one in the water department, so those use different specialized funds that are dedicated to those specific purposes. They can only be utilized in those departments. And then Dave did touch on it, but there are a couple of large ticket items just at the bottom there. Our, our two treatment facilities, one at well 12 and one at well 13, well 12. The actual well location is actually on Eighteenth Avenue. It's in a kind of an island area there. It's not large enough to host the treatment, so the treatment facilities itself are actually across from Separgeon Field on Avenue 396 on some property that the city owns. So, we actually had, we ran raw water lines from well 12 down Eighteenth to 396, and then that water will, that will be treated. And then well 13 also is being treated. Those are the two, those are the two wells that we have with TCP amounts higher than the allowed maximum contaminant level. Well 13 is located just north of Ace Hardware, kind of west of, west of Academy. Those funds are coming from settlement dollars from our lawsuit against the Diamond Shell, who were the ones that put the TCP in the ground and ultimately have caused the higher contaminant levels in our water. So, so that work is on track as well, and it is important that, obviously, that we get it up and going as quickly as we can. That concludes my report with regards to the capital improvement project for 2019-2020, but happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
This is Councilmember Hurtado. I do have a quick question for you, Alex. I know that I have brought this up last year, obviously, in 19, about the possibility to have the live stream capability, and I know that we are dealing with a lot right now as far as COVID and everything that's going on, but I do think we are kind of now dipping more into having to kind of do this kind of stuff because of what's going on. So, I noticed that it is not yet started, and maybe that's because I didn't bring it up. But I was hoping that, you know, at some point here in the near future, even after this is over, if we could use those, you know, funds that we put there for that project, so.
Yes, certainly. And I should clarify, not yet started just sort of means that we haven't, haven't started on any installation yet. We have done some of the, some of the groundwork on, on getting pricing for it. It's interesting now, I agree with your point, some of the, some of the requirements of the Brown Act that are usually required of public agencies have been suspended, you know, because of COVID-19 and, you know, not being able to gather together. And so, when we do get back to normal, we do certainly want to provide the service that's been outlined in the, in the CIP. We just have to make sure that, obviously, it's different when you guys are all, all here, that we're making sure that we can, we can see you all and that we're recording it. We have some requirements with regards to how long we have to save the videos for and some ADA requirements as well. So, So um just trying to make sure that we take all those things into consideration. So that we're doing it as, you know, as a public entity. Obviously, our requirements are a little bit more stringent than if even, you know, someone came in and recorded as part of the audience. But certainly appreciate the point and we'll make sure to keep you guys updated.
Thank you very much.
This is council member Dick. I agree with uh council member Hurtado. And the other thing would be, she's probably thinking this too, is considering this may not be the only shelter in place or situation where we're not able to meet, uh you know, in a one location where it can be livestreamed. What about uh any investigation into, I know Cisco has a product, WebEx, that can be utilized for these online meetings? So that not only could we have the, our voices and, you know, video of us, but also whatever material so somebody can see it as you're presenting.
Yeah, we'll, we'll certainly take a look at that.
Any other questions? I'm gonna open up the public comment at this time and I'll bring it back to council. Any other questions from the public? Okay, I'll close the public comment and bring it back to council for further discussion. Okay, hearing none. Um is this, this is just information only, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. All right, uh moving on to the five point five. This is the twenty twenty dash zero two, the other executive order that Mike Nolan had for us and we need to approve.
Yes, Mayor Roman, members of council. Uh executive order twenty twenty dash zero two relates specifically to um employee screening. Uh and this is uh coming directly from the Fresno Department of Public Health and the order that they issued over the weekend. So they provided some specific requirements uh for medical providers, but also for all employers as well as is all residents of Fresno County. Uh this relates specifically to the employer's portion and what we, what we mean to provide here. And so that includes on a daily basis while conducting business, screen all employees of febrile respiratory illness. Exclude from work all employees that report symptoms of febrile, uh febrile respiratory illness for seven days from, from the day that they are identified as having symptoms. And direct employees excluded from work to isolate at home and to notify all close contacts to quarantine themselves for fourteen days from the last known contact with the patient. Uh so we've provided some guidance um to all of our department heads who have put forth individual procedures for each morning. And some both beginning of workday and end of workday. So there's a, you'll see included in your packet, there's a screening checklist for all employees. That template was provided by Fresno County Department of Public Health. And so we're following their recommendations. In addition, we've provided each department with digital thermometers. Uh and there's a potential that if there are other symptoms present, that employees' temperatures will be taken. And any employee's temperature reads above one hundred point four Fahrenheit will be sent home and asked to self-isolate until they are asymptomatic for at least seventy-two hours without the use of any medications. And so all of those, all the guidelines here are based upon the recommendations from the Fresno, from the Department of of Public Health. And so uh we enacted this earlier this week to comply with that order. And so we're asking for your confirmation of that order this evening, of the executive order twenty twenty dash zero two. That concludes my report.
Okay, um I'll open up first the public comments. Are there anybody from the public that'd like to comment on this five point four item? Okay, hearing none. Um council, do you have any questions on this item?
Yeah, I do. I, I have a question. This is Councilman Palomar. Alex, I have a question on the, on this uh screening checklist that the employers are required to have their employees do. On the temperature, uh is the employer supposed to actually take employee's temperature every day? Or is that just a, you know, if employees feeling like they have a fever? Do you know the requirements on that, Alex?
Yeah, so there's not, uh our understanding is, is that it's not a requirement for all employers. Really, the the checklist is a requirement. There are some different guidelines for certain fields, so medical field. Like I'll tell you that our, our fire department, our paramedics, we, we are proactively doing temperature checks right now. But it's not, my understanding is, is that it is not a requirement that all employers be taking temperatures sort of at their discretion unless they're part of a certain field.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions from council? Okay, I'll need a motion to approve uh twenty twenty dash zero two.
Councilman Palomar, I motion to approve.
Okay, can I have a second? This is council member Hurtado, I second. Okay, and we'll do a roll call though.
Council member Hurtado?
Aye.
Council member Palomar?
Aye.
Council member Dick?
Aye.
Council member North?
Aye.
Mayor Roman?
Aye, thank you. Okay, uh moving on to item six, council reports and staff communications. Six point one, community services commission.
Uh we have not met.
Okay, six point two, public safety committee.
Uh Councilor Palomar, right now we are not scheduled to meet. Uh in the near future, I'm waiting to hear from uh member Brandon Purcell. He's meeting with, as Alex touched on, uh Che Davian about some cameras that we're gonna donate some money for, for the city or, you know, for the police department. So when I hear back from Brandon, we have, we're probably gonna try and meet so that we can, with teleconference, so that we can approve those funds in the near future.
Okay, thank you. Six point three, chamber conference.
Um we have not met. I'm not sure as how they're planning on approaching their next meeting. If you have an answer to that, Mayor Roman? I haven't reached out.
Okay, I'll reach out to the executive director and ask if they're gonna be meeting or anything. I do know that um I will be doing a Zoom, uh Zoom conference call on Saturday as part of the committee looking uh at the candidates for the next Swedish Festival Queen, on Saturday.
Yay!
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh six point four, economic development.
E D C has not met.
That's not met.
Six point five, finance committee.
Finance committee met last Tuesday. Uh and I was, went over the uh capital projects budget that was presented tonight.
Okay, uh six point six, planning commission.
Planning commission did not meet in March, but they are scheduled to meet uh next Thursday evening. They have uh two items on the agenda.
Uh six point seven, South, South King's Groundwater Sustainability Agency Joint Powers Authority.
Has not met until last evening.
Six point eight, city managers' report.
Uh you've heard most of my report already this evening, so no additional report.
Okay, thank you. Uh seven, other business that may come privately before the city council? Um I have one item. Um I received an email today and I, I don't know if any, if any other council members have heard the good news, that the T-Mobile Sprint merger has closed officially. And they are looking forward to coming to Kingsburg. Uh there is only one hurdle at the, at the moment and that would be the C P U C vote that is scheduled right now for April, is it sixteenth, Alex?
Uh yes.
Okay, um we received an email today just talking about the excitement that they have and they're looking forward to working here in the city of Kingsburg. And um so that's very exciting that the T-Mobile Sprint merger is closed. You can go out there and read a lot about it. And so we're very excited that this, this part is officially over. The next piece, just for California, will be the C P U C. Um Alex and I were on a call um to the committee, the C P U C uh commission. Uh we, we also, I, I gave testimony just on the public comment about what it means to Kingsburg and the importance of it to our region. And um obviously through teleconference calls. And um again, let's hope that that vote happens on April sixteenth and that'll be the last piece of this. But it's out there just saying that the merger's done, it's over, their CEO is all excited that it's done. But as far as California goes, we just have that one last little piece of hurdle. But yay, let's just keep this momentum going, right guys? This is exciting.
That's so exciting.
Yeah, so, yay. Anything else you want to add about Alex on that one?
No, um just positive news. And so now we'll have to, hopefully they'll finalize their location here now that the, that the merger's complete. And uh and we'll get to work on, I'm working on that.
Yeah, nice email to receive today about that, so, yay. Okay, any other things anybody wants to add or other business at this point?
Um I, council member Hurtado, I just wanted to say thank you, um Mayor Michelle, for your updates that you've been providing, um your Facebook and all the website and things. I think those are super informative and just a nice way for people to interact with what's, you know, going on in the city and keeping up to date, especially since most of us are at home on our phones. It's a really great way to be able to um get the word out. So thank you very much for that and to the staff who helped her put all that together.
I'm just gonna say I can't do it without my, my crew. Thank you, Abigail. And everyone, I'm, I'm gonna make another one this week. I, it's nice to do a weekly one just to give everyone the updates because it's changing so fast. And uh the more that we can get those out there. I mean, the carrier is another great way that we've been getting that out there and also through social media. I just think of, you know, making videos, this is another piece of that information that's been getting out there. So staff's been great, updating constantly anytime we get new information. So if we can just do another, a video piece, it's just another way to do it, so, great, thank you. Anything else? All right, we'll move on to eight, future agenda items. Uh these items will be added to a future agenda with direction from council. Uh there's two things with eight point one first. We, we need to consider written requests from the Kingsburg Joint Union High School regarding removal of the crosswalk on Eighteenth Avenue. So that's the first one to consider. So we would need a motion, correct? Um is that something we want to consider for future agenda items?
Yeah, I think um mostly I just wanted you guys to see the correspondence and make sure that you're comfortable with, I think the proper way to move this through is if, if you're willing. So everyone knows what we're talking about. We're talking about the mid-block crosswalk that uh joins Memorial Park to um the high school. Uh and our understanding is, is that it's kind of a remnant crosswalk from when that Eighteenth and Sierra was configured entirely differently. You know, didn't used to have a traffic light and um so I think it's a carryover from that. The high school um has expressed some frustration with that, just obviously, you know, what kind of, this kind of led into our conversation too, that Dave spoke upon earlier about the scramble at the corner there because you have a number of, you know, kids going in several different directions. And so their request is to remove that crosswalk. So we wanted to make sure that you knew that we were considering working on that based upon a request from the high school. We would funnel it through, probably through the traffic safety committee so that they could look at any costs associated. Uh and then obviously any other potential impacts, you know, from removing that crosswalk. And then it would, you know, come back to you guys for, for consideration on. And I think it'll probably be part of a larger discussion uh with regards to the scramble at the corner and um and, you know, potential addition of of crosswalks further north. But just because that's such a, you know, visible area and, you know, highly utilized area when, when school's in session, we just want to make sure that you guys are aware of it. So as long as everybody's on board with sort of that, that process of going to the traffic safety committee first, then it will come back um at a future date.
Um what, what's the council um feeling on that? Would you like to bring that back to, would you like that for a future agenda item?
Yeah. This is, this is council member North, yeah.
This is council member Dick. I mean, that's the recommendation of the transportation engineer and the police having an issue and the school doesn't have an issue, then it tends to bring it back.
Yeah, I'll give it back.
Same, same here. Yes.
Okay. Okay, so eight point one, um we'll bring that item back for a future agenda item, okay? Anything else on that one, Alex? Is that okay?
No.
Is that a correction?
No, thank you.
Okay, all right. Uh eight point two, consider citizen requests for policy discussion regarding backyard chickens. I don't know if the one we've already made a decision on. How is the council feeling about this one, about bringing this one back for a future agenda item?
This is council member Dick. I'd like to weigh in first. Personally, I don't, I just don't think it's the time to uh have this, uh, you know, discuss amongst councils. Right now, uh majority of the population may not be able to actively participate in the process of coming down to the council meeting. And I mean, we have the dialogue, but I think, you know, I think obviously the yes on chickens in the backyard group is very active in trying to promote, uh, you know, passage of this right now. But I think the time that it would take staff to disseminate the information, educate the public, not to mention complaints potentially to police. You know, now's not the time with what everybody's facing. I, I'm not opposed to, once the shelter in place is removed, that we would bring it back for consideration. I'm not for it, but that doesn't mean that, uh, it shouldn't be discussed again. Also, I think too, there's a lot of people who are stuck at home, uh nuisances from neighbors. You know, are gonna be more prevalent in people's minds now because they're stuck at home, so those are my thoughts.
Anybody else?
This is, this is council member North. And um I do agree with council member Dick that I think that it should be on a future agenda item, but one where we can meet in council chambers, not a teleconference. So it's equitable for public to be able to participate.
Okay, anyone else?
This is, this is council member Hurtado. Um I know we have gotten a lot of public support for this topic, but I do agree with um council member Dick and North that it is a hard time to try to get as much community involvement as possible. And um but I, I do also see it from the perspective of the residents who aren't support because um, you know, their point is that they wanted to revisit this because we are in, um, you know, in this pandemic. So um I, I just wanted to make that statement of, um, I, I do agree with the two council members who previously made those comments, but I um, I also understand the public's point of view.
Okay. So you, so it sounds like what we should do is just hold off then and wait to a later date and bring it back at a later date. Is that what I'm hearing this?
Good.
Good.
Okay.
Yeah, on an, on an agenda when we can meet together and on a teleconference.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, great. Alex, do you have a direction on that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay. All right, so if anything else, if not, we will adjourn to this regular Kingsburg City Council meeting.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. All right, thank you, everybody. Stay safe, stay safe and healthy.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, everybody.
Stay nice and healthy.
Wash your hands. Bye-bye. All right, thanks, everybody.
Ben Palomar.
Joel Hurtado.